Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Vido.
Present.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Bishop.
Present.
Counselor Tejada.
Present.
Counselor Abzaneda.
Here.
Counselor Robinson. Counselor Perlottanda.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia.
Present.
And Counselor Ray Cooperrow. You have a full call, Madam Chairman.
At this time, we'll suspend the rules for the fire chief, Len Albanese, to come in and do a swearing in ceremony for one of the firefighters.
Thank you, Madam President. Before we begin, I would ask that everyone stand for a moment of silence in honor of firefighter Christopher Roy of the City of Worcester Fire Department who made the supreme sacrifice on December 9th, 2018. Thank you. Tonight, we once again come before you to swear in our newest member of the Chelsea Fire Department. Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you firefighter David Veelman for appointment to the Chelsea Fire Department. Firefighter Veelman is a Chelsea resident, born and raised, and a graduate of Chelsea High School's class of 2008. He is also a graduate of Mass Fire Academy Class 268, which graduated on November 19th, 2018. He is currently assigned to Group 4, and I call on the city clerk to administer the oath.
Please raise your hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
David Veelman.
David Veelman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That will faithfully.
That will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a firefighter.
As a firefighter.
Of the Chelsea Fire Department.
Of the Chelsea Fire Department.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my abilities.
Of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably.
Agreeably.
To the rules and regulations.
To the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And laws of the Commonwealth.
And laws of the Commonwealth.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the City of Chelsea.
Of the City of Chelsea.
So help me God.
So help me God.
At this time, firefighter Veelman will be pinned by his wife Jenna Lynn, who was a teacher at the Kelly School, first grade in the Camino's program. And that concludes our portion of the ceremony with our thanks.
We're still in recess. We'll allow a couple of minutes for him to take pictures with the family up here. Back to order.
Back to order.
We're back to order.
Public speaking.
Public speaking. Public speaking portion is open. If you'd like to speak, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address. For the record, you have four minutes.
My name is Manuel Tache, and I live in A-93 Broadway. I am here as a representative of Chelsea High School, and I want to say thank you to everyone who helped us. I also want to give honorable mentions to people Julio Hernandez, Richard Moronsky, Dr. Mary Burke, Frank DePardo, Damal David, Elena Asher, Tom Ambrosino, and a lot of other people who helped us on this movement for graduation outside. And we have come very far, and I want to say that I'm really proud of what our class was able to accomplish, and I am very thankful for everyone who's here today and who's in support with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jocelyn Post, 91 Memorial Park Ave. So, I just want to say thank you. Thank you to all the students, thank you to all the parents, thank you to the school committee, thank you to the city council, thank you to everyone who has brought us here in this process. I can truly say that I didn't expect for us to get here and for me to be speaking in front of you guys, talking about our efforts for this desire, and I am extremely thankful for this opportunity. I just want to say that although we may not have gotten the whole senior class here, we have definitely gotten representatives from across all the classes, and not only that, we gathered signatures, a whole bunch of them, from students of all grades that show that they still support this and that even the freshmen who are saying, "We're just freshmen, how does this affect us?" And we explained, "If you guys want your parents and family to see you walk across the stage, you have to support this so that we can have graduation outside." Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public speaking?
Richard Moronsky, lifelong resident, 133 Prescott Ave, Chelsea. You all know, I sit on the school committee. I've been working with these kids for the last three months. It's something that I've been seeing in the last, I don't know, 10, 15 years or 20 years, we saw the loss of pride in the city when it comes to parades and supporting the veterans. But one thing I found out is that we didn't lose the pride of these kids, you know? They worked very hard, and they did it the right way, trying to change this. They had their graduation at Chelsea High School, I don't know for how many last years, indoors, where they had to watch, parents had to watch their kids on screens in the gymnasium, I should say the auditorium. School committee took a vote, and we had moved it outside. Back in the 70s, there was a bumper sticker that the football team used to sell. It says "Chelsea Pride." The stickers were everywhere. The pride is sitting in this room right now, and the Chelsea Stadium belongs to the whole city. Hopefully, you'll pass this tonight, and when they graduate, the pride will be on the Chelsea Memorial Stadium, and it'll be their field that day. So hopefully, you guys will pass this, and I thank you. Thank you, Bishop. I thank you all, and I especially thank Tommy Ambrosino, the Chelsea School Department, and Superintendent Mary Burke. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marcela Castillo, 110 Chestnut Street. I just want to say, like, thank you to everyone that's been in support of us, like, school board, parents, like my friends have said. Class of 2019, and anyone that supports us, like, on the council too especially. I mean, like, when have you ever seen this many students at City Hall at a council meeting? Like, we could be at home doing our homework, and, or at the basketball game, actually. Go Devils! But yeah, like, I feel like we need a lot more pride, like Mr. Moronsky said, for our students. A couple of my friends have actually gotten accepted to Dartmouth, like Ivy Dartmouth, Posse Scholarship, and all these other wonderful, you know, all these, like, good things that we should celebrate. I think for myself, I didn't go to Chelsea High until my freshman year because I transferred from another school. They looked down upon me when I transferred here. They thought that my future wouldn't be important, or like, I wouldn't have a good outcome, but I'm doing good. Other than, like, all the other personal stuff, we should celebrate our students, like, like I've said, like, all this determination, we deserve to have it on the field. Like, my mom here, she's been super supportive. Yeah, we can have, like, we have graduation outside already, we can have it, like, on Carter Park, but that field is also our field, it's a city field, it belongs to Chelsea, we're from Chelsea, we deserve it, and I would really appreciate it if you guys really helped us and make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Claudia Castillo, 110 Chestnut Street. I just want to say thank you, and I want to let you know, these kids working hard. Do you know so many kids already, friends to Marcela, they already have a scholarship for the full student for the college? And you know what the point we are now, and these kids already have it. So it's a blessing, but believe me, you guys have a good community and good future for these kids, it's gonna be a good, the best person you can have in Chelsea. I live in Chelsea and 22 years, and I see how it's growing. My sister go to Chelsea High, maybe you remember her, she working in the City Hall and do so many things to get a scholarship, Johanna Mateo. So, just thinking that, you can support them now, and thank you very much for do that, and they fight for that. So what we can do, you support them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Rosemary Collel, 109 Sagamore Ave, member of the Chelsea School Committee for many, many years. Could all the students from Chelsea High please stand? Thank you all very much. You fought it, you won it. You should be very proud of yourselves, and your parents should be very proud, the way you project yourself for your fight, and you won it, and I'm very proud of all of yous. Thank you.
Anybody else for public speaking? Please state your name and address for the record. You have four minutes.
Hi, my name is Sandy Maynard, and I'm a resident and homeowner at 52 Chester Ave in Chelsea, and I'm here to express my support for the ban on plastic shopping bags. You know, it's not only good for the environment, it's good to reduce the litter that our wonderful DPW work so hard at, so I would like to express my support for the ban. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lou Memelet, Assistant Director of Public Works and City Engineer. I just wanted to use this opportunity to, again, reiterate that someone from DPW is gonna try to be at each of the meetings to stay up and current on all the issues and concerns of the City Council, and also to follow through on all the, any and all council orders that come through. Positive note, we had a recent council order dealing with cleaning of sewers and catch basins, happy to report that those have been taken care of. I see on the meeting minutes tonight, there's another issue related to potholes, which we'll obviously jump right on. So, want to remind the council that, you know, there's additional venues and ways to connect with us, both the council and residents connecting with us, and us as DPW trying to reach out and be more connected to the city council, especially through subcommittees and in other meetings with the city council. So, with that, everybody here, I think, knows how to get in touch with myself, or Bert Taverner, or Fidel Maltese, so we're here to keep it moving. Thanks.
Thank you.
Naomi Zabat, resident at Spencer Lofts. I'd just like to speak in favor of the ban on plastic bags as well, for all of the reasons that everybody already knows. I have been part of very many cleanups in Chelsea, so I am on the other end, just as a community citizen, working to keep it beautiful here, but it will help if, on the other end, we don't have as much things like plastic bags all over the streets, as well as just the idea of using recyclable bags, and all that is, I think it's just better all around for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Anna Bogdanova, and I'm also part of Spencer Lofts, and I am a longtime volunteer for picking up trash and plastics all over the United States, and I've even, you know, led groups to do this kind of work. So, you know, every day, I walk my dog around these streets, and I pick up trash, and I also report on C Clicks Fix, so thank you for having that up and being responsive to that. I support the ban on plastic bags as well, but I would also like to recommend that the city creates a proper structured program to actually not just phase out plastic bags, but also the mass quantity of styrofoam that's being produced. I understand that there are businesses that are concerned, that this could hurt them, but we've seen other cities where this works, and if there are ways that the city could look into providing exchange or incentives, or like a time length program so they don't have to actually switch everything out at once, then there are ways that we can make everyone collaborate together so that it works for everyone, as opposed to being stressful for the businesses around here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public speaking? Going once, going twice, that portion of the meeting is closed. Counsel Robinson.
If we can suspend the rules and actually take 11C, which was introduced by Counsel Bishop in regards to the $170,000 for the stadium.
Any objections to moving this item out of order? Okay. It's before us. What do you want to do with it, Counsel?
I'd ask for a roll call vote, and I'll be very brief, but I just want to thank the students and all those who had the courage to come up here and speak your piece and support this issue. I think it'll be a great benefit for the city, not only be for graduations, there'll be other activities that can be held at the stadium. So, I just want to thank you personally.
Counselor Bishop.
Last week, I introduced an order before the council regarding, this money is being taken out of the stabilization fund, which is the rainy day fund for the City of Chelsea, which this board pushed to have $30 million put in last year. And my request last week was to replace that money, once we got free cash certified. Unfortunately, it was turned down, so I wasn't happy coming up here this evening. Certainly don't want to say no to these young folks here, who I'm impressed with also. You did a great job of speaking, organizing, getting this thing done. Congratulations, you did a good job. What a difference a week makes. The city manager told us, or agreed in conference this evening, that he would replace that money in the stabilization fund, so that I feel free now to vote on it, and I certainly am going to support the students of Chelsea High, and I wish you all the best next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Bishop. Counsel Tejada.
Yeah, you know, my comment is more about you guys. Fantastic, you know, and everything that you do in life is a recipe, there's a recipe for everything, like making a cake, so whatever you want to do in life, you just look at somebody else who's done it, and you repeat the same recipe. I've never seen a group that has impacted the council so much as you guys. Phenomenal. I mean, you know, you had Counsel Avellaneda, Counsel Rodriguez over here, prepping up something for us to approve, but then the city manager, everybody was ahead of it, awesome. Keep up the good work, and know that this is the way that you get things done in life. If you follow this formula, it's amazing where you guys are gonna go. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else before we vote on the order? Okay, so a yes vote would be?
A yes vote would be to approve the $170,000 from the school capital stabilization account fund for the veterans' field construction account. Counselor Vido.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Bishop.
Yes.
Counselor Tejada.
Yes.
Counsel Abzaneda.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Perlottanda.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Ray Cooperrow. 11 in favor and non-opposed, motion adopted.
Congratulations.
We have the approval of the minutes for the meeting, December 3rd, 2018.
Approval of the minutes, anybody? Accept and file a communication under suspension.
Communication from the city manager, the first communication is ISD tickets. Pursuant to your recent council order, I have attached for your review a hot copy of the list of all fines and tickets issued by the Inspection Service Department during calendar year 2018. Next communication from the city manager, response to council request for expenditures. Dear councils, I am writing in response to two recent council orders requesting certain infrastructure improvements. In both cases, the price required for the work are likely more than the city council anticipated, and so in each case, I recommend against proceeding. The first council order requested that I consider installation of a statue of John Owez for the Owez Park. In response to this order, the city contacted the individual who created the Red Auerbach statue for the City of Boston to gain a perspective about costs. The individual informed the city that to create a public outdoor lifeside statue that would survive in the northeast climate, the cost would be approximately $150,000. At this significant price, I do not recommend this park improvement. The second council order requested that the DPW consider moving a hydrant and widening a curb cut on Washington Avenue to allow easier driveway access. The DPW has determined that the cost of moving the hydrant alone would be in excess of $10,000. Because hydrant relocations are so expensive, constituents who have made this request in the past have been advised that they must pay privately for this work. However, in this particular case, the DPW informs me that a different and far less costly solution, a simple modification to the driveway divider, would accomplish the goal of easier driveway access. I would recommend that they ought to be advised to pursue that solution rather than the costly hydrant relocation.
Counselor Bishop? Or anybody?
Accept and file a communication.
Okay, accept and file a communications.
The next communication from the city manager, approval for department to pay prior year expenses. Dear councils, I am writing to request approval for three departments of the city. Next communication, request for transfers for capital projects. Dear councils, I am writing with request to transfer surplus capital funds to allow the city to move forward with some pending capital projects that have.
Raise the reading and send it to the committee on finance.
That's all the communications we have from the city manager. Copy of communications and petitions. We have a communication received from Council President Vido regarding the city manager contract renewal subcommittee appointments.
What's the motion? What's?
Accept and file a communication.
Yeah, accept and file a communication. Can I speak on it briefly?
Just one?
It's just a subcommittee that we set up to renew the city manager's contract, because that's on a time constraints. Thank you, that's it.
We have a copy of a communication received from chairman woman of the school committee, Ms. Jeanette Velez, regarding her support for the Chelsea High School senior class of 2019.
I asked that we waive the rest of the reading, I was in support of the funding for the school.
Accept and file one?
Accept and file a communication under suspension.
We have a copy of a communication received from Green Roots Executive Director Roseanne Bonjirani and Green Roots members regarding the proposed FOB site.
Counsel Bishop, move the wave to read.
Communication.
Accept and file a communication. Thank you, Counsel.
We have a copy of a communication received from city clerk, parking clerk, Jeanette Centron White, regarding the actions approved at the December 11th, 2018 traffic and parking.
Counsel Cooperrow.
I object and strike out section 3 items.
What's that?
Congress Avenue, One Outbound Street.
What do you mean? To strike? What do you want?
Yeah. Yes, they asked to have a voted separate.
Yeah, we have, we have a roll call.
Okay, so you, what is it? You want to approve all items but number three, and you want a roll call on that one?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, Counsel, you got the floor.
Well, first, can we vote on the first part?
Yeah.
To approve all items but number three?
Yes.
Okay, you want a roll call on that?
Yep. Any discussion on?
Roll call, nope. Let's vote. You get a chance in a minute.
Wait.
Counselor Vido.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Bishop.
Yes.
Counselor Tejada.
Yes.
Counsel Abzaneda.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Perlottanda.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counsel Ray Cooperrow. 11 in favor and non-opposed. On item number three.
Item number three, what's the motion on?
Roll call? Do you move roll call, item number three?
You got the floor, Counsel.
It seems like a lot of times, they forget the people that live there. What they want to do here, it's kind of strange. I cannot agree with parts of it, where it says, right here, Avenue One Outbound Street, only 11 buses access Outbound Street during hours 7:00, 8:30, and 2:00 to 2:45 PM. But the part down here that I cannot agree with is this, where you make the whole street, that one side of the street, no parking from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM for school buses. That's kind of wrong. I don't see any buses that go in at 6:00 in the morning, and I don't see them all day. Why are you denying the poor people that live in that area? They were up here telling you that they didn't want that, and you still went against them. Isn't it time that people really, us, represent the people? There's nothing wrong with what you're trying to do, but why take away the whole parking the whole day? The buses ain't gonna be there all day long, from 6:00 o'clock to 6:00 at night. That's kind of doing. That's kind of doing a lot. You, you telling the people, okay, we're gonna jam it down your throat, and there's nothing you can do about it. Well, I was put up here to at least speak up against it, and that's what I'm doing. The people there should have a right and say, they tell you, we advertised it. I live in that area, you, I'd never seen advertisement. What did they send me a letter? Oh, they put in the Chelsea Record. Everybody doesn't read the Chelsea Record, they put it on the computer. Everybody doesn't have a computer. So how do you know that these people actually, they agree or disagree with what you do? You, when you do something like that, you put a big billboard outside of the area, why would cats bagels, and you advertise it, and you tell them, people of this area, this is what's gonna happen. If you want to go up there and talk about it, do so. They, you can't just say, well, we're gonna do this, and this is what it is. So, my colleagues should vote not to do this, at least change it. Don't take a street and park it from six A.M. to six P.M. That's wrong. Give the opportunity of the people, at least. Not only that, what happens to the people that live there? Don't they matter? We matter, we all matter. The people that live in the city do matter. You can't just say, I'm gonna do this because it's the benefit of you. How do you know it's the benefit of them? They don't want to take this. Parking is a premium, you're taking it away from them, so it's not a benefit for them. You're doing it worse, and that area is already congested.
Item three.
For, you, you can't even move there, I lived here, and I know what I go through every day.
One minute, counselor.
Huh?
One minute.
Okay, I don't have much more to say. The only thing is, is we are elected by the people. Let's represent the people. For once, show the system that, that people that you elect actually represent you and have your back. That's all I'm saying, thank you.
Anybody else like to speak on item three of the parking commission? Counselor Avellaneda?
I'll be support, I'll be voting no, and supporting the counselor on this. When I read this, this seemed to be the major change, one that did not have, as he stated, the outreach that I think this deserves. And having lived on Hotdon Street, I know how important parking is in that area. There's a lot of questions here, immediately when I read this. It doesn't say anything about, and the devil's in the details, as I just learned a couple of weeks ago on Washington Avenue. It doesn't say anything about what happens when there's no school in session. The sign says, no parking, and that's it. It doesn't say not during school hours, and I know the sign is very important, these things, these little details have to be said. To my colleagues on the school committee, you know, it would have been nice if we had a conference with them to find out that they have this support, and that they were part of this decision-making process. We didn't have a conference on this, nothing. This is a big, major change. No talk about when you're closing the street down, would that mean police details involved here? I mean, you are shutting down a street, uh, when they're saying, no, no traffic will be passing by. And again, I also share the concern about the length and time that they're talking here from six to six. It's a wide range of hours, particularly when they're not actually being used. And I know that behind this, there's an intent for the safety of the schoolchildren, I get that, but I think that this has not fully been vetted, thought out, and before I vote on this, I'd rather have a meeting with the traffic board, school committee, and the residents to discuss this and see what we can actually do and tweak this a little bit to make it a little bit more applicable for, not only for the school, but for the residents who are living there and have to put up with no parking for the majority of the day. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Anybody else like to speak on item three? Counselor Devol.
I'll be brief, because I don't want to beat, beat a dead horse, but I too am in support with Counselor Coopero. This is a very convoluted paragraph, there's actually four different parts to it. It says to change the, the signage to no parking six A.M. to six P.M. I don't even know what the language was before, and I just feel that if this is coming before the council, that we need to be given all the information in order for us to be able to make an informed decision. I think this is unfortunate, I think it's very thoughtless, and in defense of the school committee member, I'm pretty sure that they weren't kept in the loop about this either as the request came through Joe Cooney. I just think we need to do a lot better in the way that we're communicating with one another, especially with this board, when we're, when we're the ones that make the ultimate decisions. Thank you.
The motion's on the floor, but it's a roll call, vote to, vote it down. Yes.
I'd like to-
Hold on.
A yes vote would be to, uh-
Defeat.
To approve it, and a no vote would be to deny it, right?
Any counselor would like to speak?
I'd like to, I'd like to offer an amendment, that we meet with the school committee, and the traffic commission, and us, and, so we may meet and go over what the language is and what the setup will be in order to move forward in regards to this proposition.
Well, I think you have to, uh, vote on this on, on, on your deadline dates, Leo, your good deadlines.
You're gonna have to vote on the amendment.
We got thirty days.
No, I don't know if you have thirty days, counselor.
Yeah.
You've got that amount of time, if you're gonna have your conference within that period of time.
Reasonable, to think that that would happen, I, I, I mean, whatever the counselor, whatever his wish is, but I don't think so.
Well, I mean, we can make it happen, I mean, that's, would be up to the chair.
Well, through, through, through the chair, it's, uh, if you want to put that on, we can have a roll call vote on that amendment, if you want to have that.
I'd ask for a roll call on the amendment.
He's asking for a roll call vote on his amendment?
On his amendment.
All right, so we're gonna have to just clarify the vote here.
Okay. For the amendment?
Yes.
The motion, do you want, I'm sorry.
The amendment offered by Counselor Robinson is properly before you now, he wants to move it to the subcommittee on conference by roll call. A yes would be moving it to, uh, the subcommittee on, uh-
Is the motion to reject item number three?
No, the motion was a roll call.
No, that's, that's the early, that's Coopero's motion. This is now Counselor Robinson's motion.
We're gonna take up the question after the amendment?
He added on an amendment to his roll call.
Can you clarify the yes vote?
If you vote yes, you're moving it to conference, if you vote no, you're not moving it to conference, and then we'll take up the roll call for Counselor Coopero, whether to adopt it or not. Okay? You're voting on the amendment first. A yes would be sent to the-
No, would be to move it, continue to have your motion.
Counsel Vido?
No.
Counsel Lopez?
No.
Counsel Rodriguez?
No.
Counsel Brown?
No.
Counsel Bishop?
No.
Counsel Tejada?
No.
Counsel Avellaneda?
No.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Per Lotonda?
No.
Counsel Garcia?
No.
Counsel Ray Coopero?
No.
One in favor, ten opposed, the amendment is defeated.
Back to the original-
You now have the original, uh, request for a roll call on item, uh, number three. If you vote yes, you're accepting it, if you vote no, you're not accepting it. Counsel Vido?
No.
Counsel Lopez? Counsel Rodriguez?
No.
Counsel Brown?
No.
Counsel Bishop?
No.
Counsel Tejada?
Nope.
Counsel Avellaneda?
No.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Per Lotonda?
No.
Counsel Garcia?
No.
Counsel Ray Coopero?
No.
One in favor, ten opposed, the motion?
Is defeated.
Item number three is defeated.
Yep. Thank you. Committee reports?
We have two late communications.
Any objection to the late communications?
Okay, read amendment, Mr. Cook.
Richard Rapice has informed us that he is in favor of the project improvements on Central Ave.
Motion-
Accept and file?
Accept and file a communication.
Leo Robertson, accept and file. We have a copy of a communication received from Donna Rapice, and she's not happy with the situation of the congestion of the traffic that will be, uh-
Counsel Robinson moved to accept and file this communication under suspension.
We now move on to committee reports, we don't have any unfinished business. Have a roll call vote, please. On what? On the plastic bag?
Plastic van ordinance?
The plastic bags?
Plastic van.
Plastic bag proposed ordinance. Any objections?
Any objection to the plastic bag?
It's not properly before you, we have a motion for-
Yeah, it's actually in conference, so just want to make sure-
It's removed.
Has it removed?
They just removed it. We have, we need a motion now to, we have adopted.
Yeah, the, the motion is, uh, to adopt it?
Roll call.
For a roll call vote, please.
Any discussion?
Yes, uh, if I may speak up.
Yes, sir. You're right, counselor.
I'm a member of a group that, uh, we do cleanups in the City of Chelsea, and, uh, every time we do cleanups, we do find a lot of plastic bags in the city, and, uh, we've been trying to work for a long time for this. We try to, we're trying to help to alleviate this problem with plastic bags, and I hope you guys can support this. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor President Vido?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. So, um, this plastic bag ordinance is something that we've been talking about for a while, and we held a subcommittee on conference about it, and I know anybody who's been to Cambridge or Boston has been familiar, when you go and you buy a bunch of things, and then they're like, do you want to buy a bag? And you're like, yeah. So you pay ten cents for a bag, I believe, and the bag is a sturdier plastic than the regular single-use ones that you see, the market back, like the market basket ones or the regular ones you get at the corner store. So basically, what we want to do is to bag those plastic bags, so that we'll only be able to purchase those thicker bags, because of littering, because it's horrible for the environment, because it gets stuck in our oceans, and our animals are eating it and choking on it, and, and it sits in their stomach, and, and really, we just need to do our part in order to try to preserve the earth that, that we've been given, because we only have one. And so, uh, we had a subcommittee meeting where we invited businesses and, and people in the community, and the meeting went very well. I didn't, I didn't sense that there were, there was any opposition, um, to this. Um, we, the ordinance is now before us. I, I, the only thing that I do, um, I know, I've spoken with the city manager, that we're not looking to implement it from one day to the other, we want to make sure to give people ample opportunity to be able to, to, um, follow or to be able to adjust to, uh, the new ordinance. I just think it's a great idea for us as Chelsea, as we're growing, to make sure that we're doing whatever is within our power to take care of our environment. And I think that the small businesses, you know, I think that they'll be able to adjust. I don't, I don't know how the rest of the counselors feel on this, because we've never really had a conversation on it, but I will ask that if counselors, I don't know if I can do this, but if counselors don't feel that we should pass this, that we can at least be, allow the opportunity to move it into a subcommittee to then allow, have conversation on it, as to not extend it any longer. Um, if people feel confident in voting, um, I just, I just feel that this is a good thing for everybody, and I, and I just hope that I can count on my colleagues for support, and, thank you.
Nobody's offered the, nobody's offered?
Counselor Coopero, you have the floor.
I believe what my fellow counselor says, I believe we should put this ban. It's a good thing, it helps all of us, it helps the environment, and it's a great thing. If anybody had a chance to watch Sixty Minutes to see what those bags actually do, then you could see, and you would want to get rid of all these bags. I will be voting in favor of the ban with my fellow counselors when it comes, when we vote on it now, because it's a great thing, it helps the environment, and it's just a great thing to do. Thank you.
Counselors, if you, Counsel Bishop?
I was one of those folks with mixed feelings about this particular ordinance. There are, you know, I did watch the Sixty Minutes show last night, and that certainly did sway me, there's no question about that. This is like a pinhead of what the problem is, and, um, I think plastic is gonna kill us all, if we keep going the way we're going. No question, that it's in the chain, and, you know, we're absorbing plastic, you know, all the time. After watching that Sixty Minutes show last night, I have to vote for it, even though I don't think it's gonna make a world of difference, but I, if it makes, I guess that pinhead is something in the right direction.
Counselor Joe Paraton?
I mean, I'm one like Mr. Bishop as well, I'll probably vote for the ordinance, but the concern, I mean, I would rather see it go to a subcommittee again, because I have concerns about people paying ten cents for bags at the grocery store. So where does, I mean, ten cents doesn't seem like a lot of money, but when you add ten cents up to Market Basket, which is the side of a Costco, and the number of people that go through there, who's getting that ten cents times whatever, whatever, whatever? Who's it go to? Does it go to the city? Does it go to Market Basket? Who's getting that money? Where is that going? That's my only concern. I mean, now you're starting to nickel and dime the residents of Chelsea, now we gotta spend ten cents for a plastic bags, for a heavy plastic bag. I know people can bring their own bags in there, but that's, that's my biggest concern. And then where do we go from this here? Do we start eliminating the plastic milk bottles next? Do we go back to glass again? I mean, it just seems like a vicious circle. I mean, I know it's bad for the environment, I mean, I have plastic bags up in my trees that have been blown around, but, like I said, the main concern that I have right here is the cost that it's gonna affect everybody that goes to the supermarkets.
Thank you, counselor. Any other counselors like Counselor Tejada?
So we spoke about this a while ago, and, um, it's a fantastic idea. I mean, I, I've been to other cities where they already have it implemented, I think we all have, and we see the difference in the streets. Uh, I know Chelsea Hill Community, we do community walks, uh, and we have a little carriage there, we get all these, all the trash that you see, and there's always, you know, a couple, a few bags in there. The one thing that I just wanted to mention, and this is for the business community that's watching, if they're watching, is, you know, um, we had spoken about this before, this isn't the first time we've talked about this, and the one thing that we did, uh, sort of alert them to is the fact that if this is coming, you probably have supplies in your, you know, in your supply closet. It's time to start dwindling them away, so you don't lose out on that, uh, expense. So just wanted to point that out, just if this comes to fruition, that will be a wasted money. Just looking out for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So that gives people time to use their supplies?
Any other counselor like to speak on the order of the plastic bags?
I would ask if we could move it back to conference. I think the business community should have an office-
They come back and speak in regards to the ordinance? You know, it's up to what, what my counselors would like to see, but I would like to see it go back to conference and have a conversation in regards to, uh, the bags.
So, so-
And what the cost and what the effect is gonna be.
So, if it was in conference, it was taken out of conference, so Counsel Robinson is now trying to move it back into council, into conference, so we'd have to have a roll call vote on that.
Yep.
Any discussion on the roll call vote, or on Counselor? On the roll call?
On the roll call for the amendment?
No.
This is an amendment, this is an amendment to send it back to conference. It'd be a roll call.
So, do, does anybody have any comments on that?
Correct, because you already spoke on the previous-
Correct, so on the amendment?
On amendment.
I, I don't know that it's necessary to send it back to subcommittee on conference if it won't take effect for another year. I think it's a matter of us instituting this ban and giving it to the city and allowing the city to do its own outreach efforts. We have already had, um, a subcommittee conference, but we did invite people, members of the business community. Um, I think a lot of the businesses know that it's coming, and so I don't know that it's necessary. I just wanted to say that, thank you. I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, I'm going to say that...
You really had a conference, subcommittee conference with some business owners and some members of the community. And they were, were supportive of this ordinance.
Thank you, Councilor. Okay. On the amendment?
Yes, I agree. The business owners were at the last conference about the plastic bags. And there was one owner there that bought a supply that would probably last them about five years, heavy-duty plastic bags. So what does he do with the money that he spent on those plastic bags? Yes, it's not going to take effect for a year. But can this be amended within that year's time? Like I said, for the owner's plastic bags that he has, for the 10 cents that people are going to pay? Are we going to be able to amend this that we're not sending it to conference? Or is it just going to go into effect a year from now?
We'll talk about that in conference. So just on the...
Well, we don't know if it's going to conference yet.
Well, if it goes. If not, it wouldn't matter.
You could still amend, uh, an ordinance that it's been adopted. You could still amend it afterwards. Uh, this is a roll call. You want the roll call?
Any councilor have a agenda?
I appreciate the concern or any business that might be impacted here. But again, um, having read the ordinance, it states two things. And, uh, one, it's a year into the impact. So, um, businesses will have that whole year to take care of it. Second, there is a section here that's for exemptions. Exemptions. And it states here right in section E, 1C, where the exemption states circumstances where retail establishment requires additional time noted to draw down an existing inventory of single-use plastic checkout bags. Any retail establishment receiving exemption under this subsection shall file with the city monthly reports on inventory reduction, remaining stock. So again, I think it's been vetted. Um, I think that the city solicitor and beautification committee who worked on this thought it out and made sure that businesses would not be negatively impacted or at least accommodated in an emergency situation. So, um, I think we should, if we're going to vote, I think we should just vote tonight one way or the other. Um, those things were considered, situations like that. So, um, I'm prepared to vote tonight.
Okay.
A yes, a yes vote would send it back to conference and no vote would not. And then you would actually, if you denied that, then you would vote on the approval of the ordinance. So a yes vote would send it to conference and no vote would not send it to conference. Counselor Vito?
No.
Counselor Lopez?
No.
Counselor Rodriguez?
No.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
No.
You voted yes for Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Tijada?
No.
Counselor Avizaneda?
No.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Perlatanda?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
No.
Counselor Recupero?
No.
One, two, three, yeses, and one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight nos. The conference amendment has been defeated. We now have the roll call requested by Counselor Lopez for the adoption of the ordinance. A yes vote would adopt the ordinance and no vote would deny it. Counselor Vito?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
No.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
Counselor Tijada?
Yes.
Counselor Avizaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Perlatanda?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
And Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Ten in favor, one opposed. The ordinance has been adopted. We now move on to, uh, second readings. First item under second reading is the appointments to boards and commissions, read for the second time.
Counselor Garcia?
Adopted by roll call by Counselor Garcia.
Unanimously under suspension if there's no...
Any comments? No comments?
Any comments on the, no?
No?
No.
Okay. A yes would be a vote by Counselor Garcia to affirm the two appointments. And a no vote would be to deny. Counselor Vito?
I'm sorry. Can you just, can I just ask that we read the names?
Sure.
And the board?
Ms., uh, to the youth commission, Ms. Italia Lamarrice, 127 Willow Street. And for appointment to the Chelsea Community Schools Advisory Board, Ms. Jessica Enriquez, 33 Bellingham Street.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Vito?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
Counselor Tijada?
Yes.
Counsel Avizaneda?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Perlatanda?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero. Eleven in favor and none opposed, most unadopted. We have the, uh, introduced by Counsel Avizaneda. Now therefore be it ordained that the revised code of ordinances of the city of Chelsea as amended be further amended by adding a new paragraph at the end of the existing section 14 dash 458 and with the following language. Within two years of the passage of this ordinance, the licensing commission shall hold two adult-use recreational retail license for an applicant owned by a Chelsea residence, uh, entities with a majority, at least 60% of its ownership made up of Chelsea residents. These licenses shall only be sold or transferred to another Chelsea residence, uh, entities with a majority, at least 60% of its ownership made up of Chelsea residents.
Motion to move to conference?
Move it to conference.
Suspension?
Under suspension.
Okay.
Seeing no objections.
Uh, we have the next item introduced by Counselor Bishop, Chairman of the Finance and Accounts. Whereas the city owns Eden Park located at the corner of, is that what you, yeah? Eden Street and Addison Street. And whereas the renovation of multi-use playground facilities such as Eden Park are a priority detailed in the city's 2017 open space and recreational plan. Whereas the proposed renovation of Eden Park calls for the replacement of playground equipment, installation of the water spray feature, replacement of rubber surfacing, reconstruction of the site's passive seating areas, reconstruction of site walls, replacement of site utilities, and introduction of new landscaping and trees.
Counselor Bishop?
What is this again?
This is the Eden Park grant.
We're doing the resolution for the Eden Park.
Oh, okay. I'm a roll caller.
Uh, would you like him to, would you like to waive the rest of the reading?
I'll waive the reading.
Okay.
I think we all are aware of what is...
Okay, and move it to roll call. Absolutely. You have the floor, Counselor.
This is a good thing. There's no question about it. But it was another item that I was going to vote against this evening. Um, only because of the funding source. And that is out of the stabilization fund, $500,000. The city manager gave us his word this evening that he will be replacing that money uh, once free cash is certified. So I am at, at liberty to vote for it because that was my only concern, uh, was the fact that it was coming out of the stabilization. Thank you.
Thank you.
And move roll call.
Okay. Roll call.
A yes would be to approve and a no vote would be to deny. Counselor Vito?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
Counselor Tijada?
Yes.
Counsel Avizaneda? Absent? Okay. Uh, Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Perlatanda?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Absent.
Absent, okay. And Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Let me just fix those up. Absent, absent. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, in favor and none opposed, two absent. The motion is passed.
New business?
New business.
New business.
First item under new business, order introduced by Counselor Bishop. Order that the city manager instruct DPW to repair the potholes on Jones Ave.
Would that be passed under suspension, Madam President?
Adopted under suspension. Seeing no objections, so moved.
Order introduced by Counsel Robinson. Order that the traffic and parking commissioner look into the possibility of residential parking all day opposite the Merritt Club from Summit Ave to Clock Ave.
Counselor Robinson?
Up to unanimously under suspension. Just, just briefly, there's possibility of a marijuana place opening up in the old employment office. So I'd like to have the trapping and parking commission take a look at this.
Thank you, Counselor.
Send a copy to traffic?
Would you like a copy to be sent over to traffic market?
Next item introduced by Counselor Vito. Request that the signs be placed at the former five locations around the city of Chelsea where Chelsea police officers have been killed in the line of duty over the past 150 years. David Wilbur Jr., Park and Congress Ave. Want me to read them?
Go ahead. Read the names.
John McKenzie, Broadway and Eleanor Street. Thomas F. Gainey, Broadway and Webster. James E. Buckley, Second and Spruce. Sergeant Arthur Cashin, 407 Broadway.
Counsel Tijada? Seeing no objections, so moved.
We have the final, uh, we have an order introduced by Counsel Robinson. Order that pursuant to section 4.3 of the Chelsea City Charter, Chelsea City Council hereby approves the cost items set forth in both the stipulated award dated November 8, 2018 in a matter of Local 93, New England Police Benev- Benevolent Association of the City of Chelsea for the periods July 1, 2016 through, uh, June 30, 2017 and July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2020. And a memorandum of agreement dated November 2, 2018 by, and between the New England Police Benevolent Association, Inc., Local 98 and the City of Chelsea for periods July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2017 and July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2020.
Um... Move it to a second reading?
Yep. Move it to a second reading under suspension if there's no objections.
Seeing none. Did you want to speak on it or anything? Okay.
We have the other part of the contract introduced by Counsel Robinson. You want it all read, or move it?
Uh, we can move it to a second reading. It'll come up in, um, January?
Yeah, it's the seventh. That's it, uh, Counsel, that's it.
That's it?
Yeah.
Oh, wow. That's it? Public announcements. Counselor Perlatanda?
Just want to let everybody aware that on December 26, the traffic lights on the corner of Eastern, Clinton and Broadway will be in working order. So hopefully that'll, uh, slow down some of the traffic there and stop people from going through the stop signs and killing a pedestrian. And I'd also like to thank, uh, Tom Ambrosino, our city manager, along with the DPW for putting in the new LED streetlights throughout the city. I believe there's going to be about 250 of them replaced. Uh, I think it's a great thing for safety reasons. I mean, it may look like Fenway Park and somebody else may complain about that, but I think it's a good thing. Thank you both.
Thank you. Counselor Garcia and then Recupero?
Um, I just wanted to make an announcement as an update to, uh, some of the traffic and parking. There was an item on the Traffic and Parking Commission agenda about a few weeks ago, specifically for the residents on Chestnut Street. I just wanted to give an update that thanks to the, the mobilizing of many of the residents there and some of the folks who attend the church on Chestnut Street. Um, and with a little bit of my help, we were able to convince the fire chief to rescind, um, his request of changing the traffic flow there. So luckily that, um, item was removed from the traffic and parking agenda. So now the traffic is back to normal as of Friday as, um, all the residents there, uh, wanted and, and along with some of the members of the church. So thank you so much for all of those who, um, took the time to send me letters, to send me signatures, and, um, also to the Traffic and Parking Commission and especially to Chief Albanese who, uh, rescinded this item from, from the agenda. So I wanted to make sure that everybody knew that. And happy holidays, happy new year and Christmas and everything, so.
Counselor Recupero?
When the snow starts to come, each mineral is going to put the salt there. So when the snow comes, hope it doesn't come for a very long time. But when it does, the resident of the city can go down there and get salt. It'll be put back there again. So you have a nice, happy Christmas and a happy new year. And see you next year, God willing.
So this, this is our, I, I just have one too.
You have to show a Chelsea ID to get your salt.
Okay. So, um, I, this is our last meeting of the year. And I just wanted to thank my colleagues for a wonderful year and thank you for entrusting me in being your president. Um, I want to also thank Counselor Calvin Brown for being my vice president this year. Um, it's been quite the ride. Um, I wanted to thank the city manager and the city hall staff for an amazing holiday party that they had last week. Um, the city manager has done, uh, an amazing job at creating a really atmosphere that's really, um, festive and, 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 um, promotes health and inclusion. Um, just, you know, you see the, the decorations up and down the streets. You see, you see it in the offices. Everybody's, just the way that people carry themselves in city hall is just a lot different. So I just wanted to thank you for, for leading the community in the authentic way that you have. And, um, when people feel appreciated, they work better and our constituents benefit from that. So thank you, everybody. Have a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Anybody else for an announcement?
And, um, we were talking about that. It's a great job. Just want to echo that simply. Um, last week, last Friday night, we had, um, Incor, um, the big casino folks here in Chelsea. We had about 500 residents come out to, um, get screening, pre-interview. Um, I talked to a lot of, uh, management, a lot of the hiring folks from Incor. At first, I thought it was just a casino, but I'm finding out it's much more than a casino. And they have much more jobs than just blackjack dealers and dice-storn and slot holders. Um, so they're really committed to hiring a lot of folks from Chelsea. I know it was a Friday night, about 500, as I said, 500 folks showed up. But they're still willing to, um, listen to Chelsea folks, um, receive your, um, interest if you want to work for Incor Boston in, um, Charlestown Sullivan Square area. You need to really start considering putting your application in and really getting in touch with them now. They're trying to open in May of next year. But the point is you have to have your application in now so they can actually screen you to see where you could best fit in their, um, organization. They have given us a commitment. Um, they've been working with the collaborative here. They're looking to hire over 500 people here in Chelsea. So it's a great opportunity for you to go in. And if you want to do house care, if you want to do, they had transportation limousine service. They, I didn't even know they had like a warehouse. They had a warehouse. And they already have Chelsea folks working at the warehouse. So it was great to see so many folks out. But I just want to echo that if you're interested in, um, working for that new, um, organization, um, Incor, you need to really let your family and friends know that you have to now start applying for the application. Um, you can go on the website, incor.org. Or you can go to their, um, resource center, which is at Everett City Hall. They have an office there. It's five days a week. They're taking applications and they need to get a lot done before January 14th. They're going to start screening the applications. They're going to start sending folks to Cambridge College for different jobs such as blackjack dealers and other, um, uh, other staff members. If you need any applications or if you need, and I'm not, uh, advocating 100% for them. I'm just letting you know if you want a good job, if you want a job, we have some applications and some information here. So you're free to take it. You don't have to take it. You think you know someone to want to take it. We're just committed to trying to get Chelsea people jobs if they want a job. And the good thing about it, it's not far from here. So if you want to meet a few applicants here, okay?
Thank you, Counselor. I appreciate it.
And also, before I sit down, as you can probably see, I'm in the Christmas spirit. So I want to wish everyone a happy, a merry Christmas, happy holidays, happy fiesta. Um, finis navina. And please enjoy your family, your friends because you never know, um, this could be our last Christmas together. Thank you.
Oh, geez.
You never know. You never know.
Pretty morbid, Counselor Robinson.
Uh, just to add, just to, just to add to the holiday spirit, also I'd like to wish everybody happy Kwanzaa.
Counselor Lopez?
Wish, uh, on Ricky Ballas, who was behind the cameras, happy birthday. Today is his birthday. And, and also, I want to congratulate the chief of Chelsea that he's getting an award for being a chief of the year. So congratulations, chief.
Thank you. Um, a moment of silence? I want to have a moment of silence for community leader Patty E. Banks' son um, that passed away in Lynn, um, a couple of weeks ago. Um, his name was Tito Leonardo Lopez E. Banks.
I'd still like to have a, can tell you, uh, a moment of silence for the two young girls that passed away last week in Revere, two months old and five years old. That family, I'm sure they're going through devastation time now.
Well, I'm a Marlboro Street boy and a member of the Knights of Columbus for years and, uh, long involved in the city of Chelsea.
Any other moments? Seeing no further business before us, we're adjourned.